I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, our first item is, just for information purposes, the resignation of Richard Saldano of Sterling Street of the Bike and Ped Committee. I just want to thank Richard for taking the time and effort to serve on this committee. And I would bring up item four is, can I get a motion to approve Tim Callahan, Jackman Avenue, to replace Richard Saldano to be appointed to the Bike and Ped Committee?
Yeah, I'll move that item.
Okay. Tom?
I'll second that, sorry.
Okay, very good. Is, I believe Tim is on the line?
I am.
Hi, Tim, nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Well, thank you for taking the time to be with us today. And I'm just going to open up to the board if anybody has any questions for Mr. Callahan.
Well, no questions. I just want to jump in and say first, thank you to Mr. Saldano for his serving on this committee and to the two appointees today. It had been my precedent to abstain from voting, but of these particular, these two particular candidates, Mr. Callahan, hello. I've spoken at great length to the Chair of this committee and who's very involved and very invested in this work. And she has support for both these candidates. So I'm happy to be able to confirm this, at least vote to support these candidates and to say thank you in advance for serving. I know cycling and the safety of our pedestrians is of utmost importance to the two candidates that have applied. So we share that and I wish them both luck and thanks.
Very good. And Mr. Flynn, do you have anything?
No, I'd just like to say thank you for agreeing to serve and best of luck.
All right, very good. Well, we always, you know, reach out to the Chair people and take their advice on appointments. You know, we have a lot more people applying than we have in the past. I think I've mentioned this before, typically it was parties, putting up people. And what I've done over the last year or so is put this in my newsletter and try to get a wider group of people to start engaging in our many boards and commissions. Over 300 people serve on boards and commissions in our town. It's nice to have, you know, more people accessing and being involved. So I think that's a really good thing. So if there's no further discussion-
Well, my shout out to anyone listening that more women need to get involved. More women need to step up when you look across the spectrum of all who are serving. No disrespect to the two fine gentlemen today, but just advocating for more women to also throw their hat into the ring.
Very good. All in favor of Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations. Thanks again.
Thank you. Thanks.
Our next one is Jose Orum, how do I pronounce it? I'm sorry, you're on mute.
Oromi.
Oromi. Okay, thank you so much. Jose's going to replace Bruce Prangley, who also resigned. And can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Awesome. Well, I just want to thank you too, Jose, for stepping up to serve on the committee. Again, we have so many slots to fill on so many different committees. And so it's actually a full-time job in itself to keep up with it. And so it's really nice to have people step up and serve. So thank you very much. And I'm going to open it up to the board if anybody would like to say anything.
Thank you to you for stepping in and serving on this important committee.
I'd like to thank you and wish you the best of luck with this and have fun with it.
Thank you. My pleasure.
All right, well, if there's no further discussion, I will ask for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimously passed. Do either one, if you want to make any comments at all before you sign off, you're welcome to stay on, of course, but you are free to leave. But if you'd like to make a comment, are-
I'd like to thank you for considering me for this and I look forward to helping out where I can.
And just like Tim, I also want to express my gratitude and for everybody's service. This is a great town and hopefully we can contribute in ways to continue to improve it.
Well, thank you both very much. Will you take care?
Thank you.
Madam First Selectman, I'd love to waive the, to make a motion to waive the readings for items five through 12.
Very good. Thank you. I appreciate that. Do I have a second?
You have a second. However, can we ask that you just give a brief introduction to each reading? Somebody did reach out to me and say that they were finding it hard to follow without the written documents. So just, I asked for the brief introduction.
Yes, absolutely.
Thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So I do want to just, I know we do have a lot, I just, I wanted to mention this before. We do have a lot on our agenda today. So I do want to note that I do have a hard stop at six. So hopefully we can be really efficient with our time. A lot of these are contracts that are part of the process. The Attorney Baldwin has reviewed them and they are all in order. And Gerald Foley has always done his meticulous effort of reviewing all of them. So I just want to say that before we begin. Item number five, this is to enter into a contract for construction of the bird observation blind structure on the town hall open space land located on 760 Old Field Road. The amount not to exceed $31,405. And I have, I have Tim Bishop on, can I get a motion to approve? I'm sorry.
So moved.
Seconded.
Awesome. And I, Tim Bishop on the line. Tim, do you want to just describe this item a little bit for the board, please?
Yeah, I'll make it quick. So this, this structure is, you know, picture kind of like a lawnmower tool shed sized structure out in the tidal marsh north of Old Field Road. It's a 30, 32, 33 acre parcel of tidal wetlands that is pretty much undisturbed. The intent of this project is to create a bird viewing structure. You know, it's a three-walled structure. You enter in on the backside so the birds out in the marsh can't see you and you could observe them through windowless, you know, windowless blind with binoculars and what. It's part of a larger project, working with an Eagle Scout candidate right now to get an Osprey platform out in the middle of that marsh, which would complement the structure nicely. And I also need to point out that this came about before I was here several years ago as the department entered into an agreement with the Tucker Fund and Karen Seacrest is here as well. But that's kind of the overview of what we're looking to do. They made a significant donation of $18,000 to fund this. And you could see by the bids we've gotten, none of those were close. So my request is to supplement that, that cost with conservation-based donations that we have in a separate fund.
Yeah, thank you, Tim, for mentioning that. And I meant to mention that in the beginning, that this is from the donation, the money's coming from the donation account that's in the Conservation Department and it's being married with the $18,000 that the Seacrests have raised for the Tucker Fund, which is really a lovely organization. And I know they've been waiting a while because we have issues in COVID and all of that. So I'm really glad to see this finally on the agenda. And I know that Karen is probably very happy as well. So I'm gonna, we have, do we have a motion? We have a motion and we have a second. So I'm going to open it up to the board. Go ahead, Nancy.
This sounds awesome. And I'm just curious, has the Conservation Committee been part of this at all? And have they followed along and approved this? It's gone over or is this kind of a separate project?
They have. And I recently gave, since we have some new membership prior to me getting here, I did bring them up to speed with Karen's assistance, probably a month or two ago. Because there's no formal permitting on conservation space, but they did, they do approve of it. And maybe that was even approved years ago, but I wanted to make sure that everyone was on board as well.
That's great. In this, in this current iteration, that's great. It sounds really great and happy to support it.
Thank you.
Tim-
Tom?
Yeah, thanks. Tim, who oversees the Conservation Fund and how much is in there?
I think it's, I guess maybe Jerry could correct me if I'm wrong, but it is a kind of separate pot managed by the department. And Conservation and Finance, I guess. There is about 55,000 in there right now.
And how are these fees collected? Are these contributions that people make for conservation causes within town or what's?
Yes, that's correct.
So these aren't, these aren't fees, these aren't any, any legal thing to do with the town? This is actually literally people just making contributions to further conservation causes within the town?
Yes, exactly.
And the only way these fees can be spent, the only way this money can be spent is through authorization of this board?
I understand that the reason why I'm here is because it exceeds a $10,000 threshold outside of my operations budget. Otherwise, I'm not sure, you know, at whose discretion can decide the use of those funds?
Jared, do we know, what's the, what's the appropriate authorization process for use of these funds?
This is a contract, so.
I know this-
Yeah, so it's going to follow, will follow those same, the same guidelines for, for approval. So that's, that's what you're approving. If it were, yeah, if it were something smaller than what would need to be approved by, by all the boards then, by small, I mean a less amount, then typically that would just, that would be spent.
What's a less amount? This doesn't, that's not even true.
The Gerald, maybe Gerald can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the, is it $3,000?
Yeah, so, Tom, to answer your question and Jared, as I actually, I'm not sure. I know I had asked Caitlin about this fund and she said that she's the one who kind of reviews it and she's the one who validated the amount that was available. And regarding expenses though, I believe that they would come through Conservation Department. And as Tim alluded to, when it goes above a certain threshold, which in this case I believe was 10,000, it has to go before the board for authorization to expend it.
See, I just don't know how, so, I, to be honest, I've never, in a long time, I don't ever remember hearing about this fund. I heard about the Park and Rec revolving fund. This is kind of a similar thing. I'm just, as it relates to this project, this, this seems an appropriate utilization of this fund. I just don't know how the fund is administered otherwise, and that makes me a little uncomfortable. That we don't have kind of a written out process as to how this should be authorized moving forward. Because, Tim, no offense to you, but I don't want you just, you know, laterally making that decision. Do you know what I'm saying?
Understood.
I don't want to put you in that situation.
And I don't know if this is what you're asking specifically, Tom, but perhaps piggybacking on that, aside from the administration of the fund, who's sort of making the determinations over what projects to fund?
Exactly. Exactly right.
So I think that would be, you know, more, or on top of what Tom is asking, that would be, and that's why I asked about the commission.
Yeah, that's what I mean by administered, but we're on the same page.
Yeah, sorry I'm late. I had trouble navigating WebEx. Like I have a hard enough time with Zoom, never mind WebEx. My apologies.
It's okay.
No, that's fine. Mylan, do you have something you want to add to this? Did you want to?
Well, I don't know. I, I think you started out with the bird platform and the, and the Osprey platform. As part of your agenda?
Yeah, it's not, we're talking about that, but it brings up the situation that we have $50,000 sitting in a fund outside the town's operating budget that's being administered by Conservation. We're using an amount from that fund to help fund this bird platform, which seems appropriate. I get it. But, but quite honestly, I don't know who and how that fund is administered and who determines what projects are appropriate for that fund to be utilized on. And that makes me a bit uncomfortable.
So let me just jump in for you, Tom. We actually, the board actually, the Conservation Director is the head of the department and gets these sorts of requests. He makes the determination, I assume. We voted on the gates, if you recall, for the open space area down at Lake Mohegan with money out of this fund. This board did that. So what happens is Tim, or, you know, comes up and says, you know, here's some projects. In this case, we had a lot of people complaining that people were using the open space after hours. There was activities and things happening. And Tim said, I have this fund, we can use it for the gates that close automatically and all that. You remember, we, I think it was over a year ago, I think we voted on that. So that's been the process.
Should, no, no.
Here comes before, you know, he comes up, says to me, here are some ideas. Here's something that we could utilize it with, make a decision to put it on the agenda and then we vote on it.
Okay, so let me ask you a question then. That means that every time funds are expended from this account, the Board of Selectment approves it?
From my experience, that's the way it's been.
Can I add to this conversation? Jim Baldwin, Town Attorney. I think that if it's $10,000 or more, then it would come before this board. And the checks and balances that you're alluding to is this very process of being approved by the Board of Select persons. So I think that's all there is to it. The H. Smith Richardson Trust is another fund, I think, separate from this one, if I understand that right, Tim. Is that right?
That's correct.
So, and that does have other guidelines written into the, the trust documents that you're familiar with, I think. But nevertheless, to authorize the expenditure and engage in work to be done, it would require approval by this body if it exceeds the $10,000. And one would assume that it has the blessings of the Conservation Commission, which is exactly what occurred in this case, and I think all others like it.
I, I think there should be, I think the, the process below 10,000 should be buttoned up. And so, because nobody here is speaking, Jim, thank you. And by the way, this isn't a criticism, right? This fund's been around forever. So I'm just saying, good, good governance should be, good corporate governance would be that there should be an official process for funds to be expended under 10,000. And then, I agree with you, over 10,000 comes to the Board of Selectment.
And I'm not trying to insinuate that we need to approve everything, but I think there should be something written down related to what this policy is. That's my point.
And I would further add that, is it the kind of thing where if the community members knew about this, then they would say, oh, I have this interesting idea and they could put in for it? So it just seems like a great asset for our community.
May I ask a question whenever it's appropriate?
Sure, go ahead. Go ahead.
I think some of these funds came from the Tucker Fund, is that correct?
Correct, 18,000.
Yeah, so I'd just like to give a shout out to the Tucker Fund because they have been such a bonus for this community. I mean, they've, they've funded all kinds of restoration projects. And as you know, Brenda, removing invasives, planting natives. And so they're a great bone to the town. So I'd like to give them a real big thank you for this. I also agree that we need a structural, we need a structure of how these funds are going to be spent and who's going to administrate them.
Yeah, and that's what I'd like to see put together.
So I would like to open it up because I know Karen is on the line. And I'm sure as, as Mylan mentioned, they, they have been really wonderful stewards in helping us. And so Karen, do you, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Would you like to comment? I know you, I know you care a lot about this.
I do. I mean, we've, you know, we're, the Tucker Fund is now a 501(c)(3) and we're very happy to be, you know, able to do what we're doing. We have a huge supportive community. And I'm very thankful to Tim for all the work he did to get this done this year. Because I think this fall, when I said, came in and met with him, I said, it's been three years. What are we going to do? And he really, he really went out of his way to make this happen as quickly as it has. And we're very excited to see this project come to fruition.
Thank you for your work and working with the town and putting this together. It does seem like a worthwhile project. Like I said, I don't think, I have no issue with this project whatsoever. I think on our side, we just need to make sure that we button up how we administer the fund. That, that was my point. So congratulations and thank you for your efforts on behalf of the town in putting this together.
Thank you, Tom. Karen, do you want to talk about, and I know you have an upcoming event, you want to share that?
Yes, every June, we have an annual cornhole tournament that we actually host at my house, which is very popular, but it really is a fun event and that's how we raise funds. We have an exciting project that we're looking at for this year with Anthony from Parks and Rec again, for the Jennings sort of entryway, which is, I think, just sort of been sort of a long neglected area that could use a little, you know, sprucing up. So we're really excited about that. And anyone who wants to come for the cornhole event, we'd love to have you.
That's awesome. You know, I don't know if you want me to widely put it out. Put it in the newsletter and that could really gain some traction. But I'd be happy to, you were willing to do that because you're doing, you're doing a really a lot of good work. As, as Mylan talked about, you are. And I know you, when you first reached out to me, when I first came in and, you know, I was just trying to get my sea legs and, and then COVID hit and so, you know, everything just went sideways. But I really do appreciate all your hard work and your efforts and it's an important thing that you're doing and-
Is there a seniors event for the cornhole?
Seniors, seniors corner?
Yeah.
Anyone can play, all ages, all groups.
There you go. Well, thank you. Thank you for being on, Karen. I do appreciate it. And I, as I mentioned earlier, we do have a lot of items on here and I want us to be able to get through the agenda. So I'm gonna bring it back. And Karen, if you wouldn't mind emailing me that information for about, if you want me to share your fundraising efforts, I'd be happy to do that for you.
I will do that. Thank you so much.
Okay, very good. Okay, so I'm going to come back and for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Awesome. And Tim, I just want to thank you for your work on it. I know you put a lot of time into this and I do appreciate it. It's important.
Thank you. It would be a great project. Thank you all.
It is, it is. Our next item is item number six. And we did waive the reading, but just to give a sense to people, this is regarding a contract for supply sewer system cleaning, closed circuit television rehabilitation services on the amount not to exceed 162,932. And I have Gerald Foley on here in WPCA. This is a WPCA project. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
And I know that the Attorney Baldwin did read the contract thoroughly before we put it on here and Gerald also reviewed all of it too. So I guess, would the board prefer to hear from Mr. Bodie about the project? Or would you, how would you like to handle this?
Sure.
John, are you on?
Yeah, I'm here.
Hi, John. Could you just briefly describe, could you just briefly describe what this is to, for the board?
Sure. This is part of the ongoing I&amp;I rehabilitation project that comes out of our operating budget. Been going on for a few years now. And our, our road crew that, that's out there every day comes up with areas that are in need of attention, repairs, cleaning. We discussed that with an engineer. They come up with a priority list, a cost estimate. And then we bid it. And this year, we got two bids for the, for the work that needs to be done. So this is something that we do, like I said, for the past couple of years and will be ongoing.
Right. I know, I know we've talked about it before. I just wanted you to refresh the board's memory. Thank you, John. I'll open it up to the board.
So, go ahead, Nancy.
Go ahead.
How long has this project been going on? You alluded to it's been going on out of your operating budget for quite some time.
I don't know the exact amount of time, but it's probably been three, four years, five years maybe.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Gerald Foley, yes. This is the fourth phase of this project. So what we had done is approximately five years ago, we engaged the services of Right Peers to come up, as John alluded to. Basically, an overall scope of service and we're doing it in phases. So with Right Peers, we'll be doing one additional phase next year and then we're going to regroup to do subsequent phases.
How many, how many phases are there?
Well, right now, we're at the fourth phase, but how many there'll be to complete it, that I don't know. I'm imagining it'll be double digits, but we're at the fourth phase.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Nancy, do you want to have anything?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you, gentlemen. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, our next item is seven. Briefly, this is regarding a lease for PNC equipment to supply lithium battery powered golf carts and Cushman Haller utility carts for the golf course. And this is a five-year lease amount not to exceed 895,000. This is for, this is out of their operating rental and storage. Motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay. And obviously, the Town Attorney has looked at this lease and Gerald Foley has reviewed it. We also have Anthony Calabrese on the line. Anthony, do you want to briefly describe this item?
Sure. Thank you, Brenda. So this, we put out the bid, an RFP for 80 golf carts and two utility carts. The two utility carts get used by our maintenance division up at the golf course. The 80 carts are what we have currently on staff, are in our inventory. They're at the end of their time right now. So our five-year lease is up this December, so they'll get us through this season. And as what we've been doing for the last, I don't know, 30 years or so, is basically doing five-year leases and just keep turning them over. So that's where we are. We put this one out, like I said. Lowest bid is the one that's in front of us right now for the five-year buyout. That's pretty much it. I think the important thing to do, to look at here, $890,000 is a lot of money. But I think it's important when you break that down per year, it's about 178,000. On average, you know, we're bringing in over $350,000 a year with our cart rentals. So in comparison, we are clearly making our money back and then some. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Anthony. I'm going to open it up to the board. Tom, did you have your hand up?
I did. Thanks, Brenda. Anthony, what was the current lease on these? Just so that we know what the rate of inflation has been, if there has been any on these.
Sorry, I have that right here in front of me. Just give me one second to flip to the right screen. The current lease is 474 and change.
So this is a significant increase.
Almost, yeah, almost double.
And that was included in your budget?
We carry, we carry half of this into our budget because it overlaps fiscal year. So we will likely be short, but we did increase it to 60,000 from last year. So I'll have to run those numbers to see where we're going to project to be, but-
But this is, but this contract automatically assumes a significant increase in the operating budget for the, for the golf course.
As well, yeah, correct.
Why, why so expensive as compared? I mean, if I did the math right, and perhaps I'm wrong- I mean, if I did the math right, and perhaps I'm wrong, it's close to double what it was in the past, no?
Yes.
Yeah, so this is Gerald Foley. I could allude, so what's happened is, is our existing lease is only for sixty carts. So what we had is, um, under the old, uh, the old, um, I guess the barn where the carts were parked, we had a capacity of sixty. When the new golf course clubhouse was built, the cart was expanded. So it had a capacity of eighty carts. So what we've done is we've actually have two leases in place. One is for sixty carts, uh, which is what Anthony alluded to will expire in December. We have a secondary lease for twenty carts and that'll go out through April of next year. So the numbers that Anthony has that he's in front of him is only for one lease. But there's a secondary lease that, that rolls in on top of that one.
Okay, two questions. Does this mean we're going to be double paying leases in the current fiscal year? Because we're going to be paying for twenty carts overlapping on existing lease?
So what we did is the rea- reason this is before you now is the supply chain issues are, is the golf, all the golf cart industry is telling us that the lead time on these carts are a full year. So what we need to do is we need to execute an agreement with new carts. And that what's going to happen is, is the carts, the sixty carts will expire in December. And then, and the following April, the additional twenty carts will expire. So, uh, what the company is telling us is they'll leave the carts in place until the new carts come in. So there may be like a one-month overlay, but it's not going to be multiple months. So right now.
And Joe, apples to apples, what's the increase in cost?
Yeah, so, yeah, so what we do is we have two, two leases. So, um, you have to bear with me one second. I just got to read the numbers. So we have, um, so our, our, the twenty carts, the total lease was a hundred and eighteen thousand and sixty-four dollars. And then the, um, the sixty carts was the three fifty-three. And then we had the utility carts, which were an additional twenty thousand. So it's approximately four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars was what the, the old lease was.
That's what Anthony said.
Yeah, so, but that's for, and it was mul- it's multiple units. And so the new lease is what we've opted to do is, if the reason why it's a little higher or substantially higher is I'm, my recommendation was go with what's called the, a dollar buyout lease. If we'd gone with a fair market value lease, the number would have been seven hundred and, uh, seven hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and fifteen thousand. So what we're doing is we're actually, at the end of this lease, we'll have an option to buy the carts for a dollar. And the rationale behind that is, is that I anticipate that we'll get residual value on a trade-in of approximately two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So what happens now is, is when we go out to bid for these, we have no, we have no bargaining. So what happens is, is the, the lease, we, we end up that we could buy carts at a, at a fair market value or we could own the carts and in essence have a trade-in value. So that's why there's a, there's a big jump. Plus there's, uh, I think it was they told us is a ten percent per year is what the cost of the carts have gone up. And so that number.
But I get, yeah, first of all, congratulations. I like the buyout option. I think that makes sound sense based on what you just said. What I'm, what's concerning me just a little bit, or what I'm still not getting a good answer to, is annually our leases on these golf carts cost X right now. And they're going to cost Y in the future. I haven't gotten that answer yet.
Yeah, so the, what I, we went back and it's about ten percent per year is what the cost of the carts going. So the first group of carts we got were in two thousand and eighteen. And then when we got carts in, uh, the two thousand and, I think it was the twenty, we were actually purchased used carts or, or releasing used carts like a one year back. So anyway, the numbers are such that if you escalated out the value of the carts. So they started out at about four, um, seven thousand per cart. And now we're approaching ten thousand per cart. Or over ten thousand per cart.
And some of the increases that is due to this buyout option that you elected to use, which we didn't have in the last one. What's the rest of it? Just, um, materials costs and the like?
Yeah, so it's, um, it's a, it's a more expensive car. The prior carts were, came with what they called acid ba- batteries. Lot higher maintenance. The current, the new lease is for lithium-based batteries, which are sealed batteries. They have a much better longevity. They're supposed to be a much higher performing battery. Anthony can allude to this too, is typically in the fifth year, the acid-based batteries don't fully charge. So you typically, you have to charge them more often and it, and it wears down. So they don't typically don't charge to a hundred percent. Lithium batteries will charge, I think even in the fifth year, approximately, you know, like eighty to ninety percent charge. Whereas the ac- acid batteries in the fifth year are probably charging at about fifty percent. So the thought being is at the end of this, end of the cycle, these cards are, uh, carts will be worth a lot more and we'll have more leverage when we go to trade them in.
Got it. Okay, thank you. I, I don't have any more questions right now.
Nancy, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Tom, for.
All right. Um, no further questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Appreciate the explanation, gentlemen. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously. Next item is number eight. Just a brief overview, this is a contract with PKF O'Connor's LLP for annual auditing services for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two audit period, not to exceed a hundred and twenty-five thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. This is operating budget fees and professional services. So I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And I'll second it.
Very good. Um, we have Gerald Foley and obviously Attorney Baldwin reviewed this and Gerald Foley. We also have, uh, Mr. Schmidt on the line as well. Um, Jared, do you want to just briefly describe what this is for the board?
I guess.
Sure, this.
Go ahead, Jared, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll kick it off, Gerald, and then you can jump.
Yeah, I'll open it up for questions.
So this is the, uh, this is the contract for the, for auditing services, which is, uh, ultimately selected by the, um, by the Board of Finance in this case. Um, and this is not unique to Fairfield, but other, other towns ran into this as well. And I've spoken with my, um, my colleagues in other towns. There's, there haven't been a lot of firms that have been competing, um, to get these bids. And in this case, uh, this was the only one, was our current auditor who, who even made a bid in this, for this RFP. And so, um, we are, uh, Gerald can go into more detail on this, but I think the plan right now was to, um, stay with them for the next year, to do our auditing and our annual report. And then, uh, to go back out again earlier than we did, uh, this year. And with the hopes of maybe attracting some more firms, um, to make it more competitive and give us some more choi- some more options. So, um, yeah, and you see the, the amount there, a hundred twenty-five nine sixty. The, uh, one difference is that we are now taking on the parking authority within this audit as well. So that's one of, one of the reasons for an increase in the, in the dollar amount of the contract. And I'll leave it at that. And if Gerald want, has anything to add? Gerald?
No, I have nothing else to add.
Thank you, Gerald. Um, thank you, gentlemen. I'll open it up to the board for questions. Go ahead, Tom.
Thanks. First of all, gentlemen, thank you. I will tell you, I, I serve on the board of Connecticut Green Bank and we had the exact same experience as it relates to finding an auditor. So I'm not, uh, I'm not surprised at this. Um, I think this is going on throughout this industry and I don't know, you know, I, who knows what next year will bring. But I do think sending it out for bid is, is good corporate governance. My experience with them and, uh, PK Davies on the Board of Finance was, was very strong. So I have, uh, no problems with this. The only question I would ask is, um, with the parking authority, uh, or is the parking authority reimbursing us for the cost of their audit?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Nancy, do you have anything?
No, I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number nine is to hear, consider an act upon resolution amending and restating a resolution entitled the resolution appropriating three. It's just, what is this? Sorry. Three eighty-eight for the cost associated with construction of a berm at the pumping station, authorizing issuance of bonds. This is, um, um, an engineering item. Bill Hurley's on the line. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay, and this, there was a lot of the, uh, fully worded resolution was found in the backup, um, that was sent out and that was posted online. Bill, would you like to just briefly describe this item?
Uh, sure. Thanks, Brenda. The request is for four hundred thousand dollars of grant extension, number five, from the Connecticut Department of Housing for the wastewater treatment plant hardening or berman pumping station project. The grant amount increases from roughly three point six million dollars to four million dollars. And the grant is one hundred percent reimbursable. Uh, we included previous information in the fourteen points description in case there were any new board members that weren't familiar with the hardening project. Basically it was due to extra, uh, fill quantities, debris and extra soil management from historical contamination. Uh, the town made a request to the Department of Housing for this supplemental funding. The state responded that there was four hundred thousand dollars of additional money available for this project and these items. So the, uh, the Department of Housing grant would cover the four hundred thousand dollars for these reimbursable expenditures. There's no additional bonding, but the long resolution basically just up- updates all the numbers to make them, uh, so I'm here to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Thank you, Bill. I'll open it up to the board. Does anyone have any questions?
So, so Bill, the only amendment here is to increase it by the amount of the grant that's available so that we can include the grant in the overall budgeted cost. And you're saying that the cost is going up because of the additional stuff that's in there. Do I have this right?
Yes, you do, Tom.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Uh, Attorney Baldwin, can I just ask you quickly, is, is nine and ten the same item? Is it just the resolution? For the four hundred thousand? No, okay, this, no, I'm sorry.
I don't think so.
Okay, sorry. I, I just, I see engineering and I'm thinking it's the same.
It is related to the same project though. It's, it's just, it's all, it's combined, but it.
Okay, I did think so. So that's the full like resolution, the item number ten. Together? Yeah, separately. Okay.
Had to separate them.
Okay, they are, they are the same.
Correct.
But they have to, staff, the bond council asked that we vote on separately. Okay, I understand now. Thank you. Okay, so if there's no further questions on item number nine, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And motion carries unanimously. All right, and item number ten is the same, I guess. It's just a resolution regarding it and it has to be voted this way. Is there any, is there any additional questions?
Should I make a motion or is it still?
Yes, can we make a motion?
All right, yes. So moved, yep.
Seconding.
All right.
And I don't have any questions.
Okay. Tom, are you good?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Nancy?
Sorry, I said aye to a muted crowd.
Okay, sorry. All right, all right. That item carries unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you, Bill.
I, I just want to throw in, I just want to throw in that Laura Pooley, uh, had worked a lot hard to get this grant money. I just wanted to mention that.
Well, thank you, yeah. She's, she's a treasure to our town and, um, we're going to miss her a lot.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, item number eleven. Can I get a motion? This is also going to require RTM approval. Can I get a motion to, um, to hear and consider an act upon a resolution recommended by the Director of Community, uh, the Economic, uh, Community Development? This is the Neighborhood Assistance Act. This is a requirement. He needs to present this item. So can I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Seconding.
Very good. Thank you. All right, Mark, you're up.
Thank you, um, members of the board. Mark Barnhart, Community Economic Development Director. I think the board is pretty familiar with this program. It's a program administered by the Department of Revenue Services. It allows businesses to provide or apply for a state tax credit for any donations they make to qualified municipal and community programs. The obligations of the town are to, um, solicit applications and approve, vet them and approve them locally. Also to conduct a public hearing and to designate a municipal liaison, which traditionally has been, uh, through my office. Uh, so this year we did, uh, request applications and our intent to participate in the program. We received six applications from four organizations, many of whom I'm sure all of you are familiar with. They do meet the criteria and we will be having a public hearing on or about the twentieth of June and then presenting it to the RTM for their, uh, final blessing and approval on the twenty-seventh in order to meet the July first deadline. There are no town monies involved in the program. I'm happy to entertain or respond to any questions the board may have at this time.
Thank you, Mark. Um, I'm going to open it up to the board.
Nancy, do you have anything?
Nope.
Quick one. Uh, give us some examples, some of the stuff that's been done in the past, Mark, just so that we can put this in the context.
Yeah, a couple of these organizations have applied for funds previously and have received charitable donations from, uh, organizations here in town. So Fairfield Theater Company and Operation Hope, both are, um, organizations that have benefited through this program. It's a great win-win opportunity, provides, uh, some opportunity to address, uh, some of their capital and operating support. Provides a tax credit to corporations such as Bigelow T or Santa Energy. Those are several organizations that have, uh, provided donations in the past in, in exchange for a tax credit. So it's a great, uh, win-win opportunity. Not big dollars involved here. Typically we see donations in the order of a few thousand dollars, maybe twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars out at the most.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Marks. Seeing no question, further questions from the board, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mark, you're up again. Go ahead, you, this is.
You know, this is my annual pilgrimage before the Board of Selectmen and RTM to present both the Neighborhood Assistance Act and in this case, the Community Development Block Grant Program. The town is an entitlement community under HUD, meaning that we receive federal dollars from the Department of Housing and Urban Development each year without the benefit of going through a competitive application process. Basically, um, to be eligible, projects need to meet one of three national objectives in our case. One typically applies to most of the activities, which is, uh, to provide benefit to persons or areas of low to moderate income. It also needs to be eligible to be funded under CDVG and not specifically ineligible to receive monies. So again, we go through this process of advertising or soliciting proposals from nonprofit and municipal organizations, uh, looking to, um, further. The mission as outlined in our community consolidated plan, our five-year plan. And this is the culmination of that effort presented to you. We do need to have two public hearings, which we've done. And then it'll be presented not, uh, just for your approval, but also the RTM's approval as well. And then ultimately submitted to HUD for its, its approval. This year, not unlike, um, other years in the past, we don't have a final amount, uh, from HUD. We do anticipate it not to be less than our current allocation of five hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. Uh, we do receive a small amount of program income from repayment of, uh, program loans through our rehab and down, uh, homeownership assistance programs. And that allows us to augment and repurpose those dollars, uh, into the community. So we have a total budget that we're presenting to you today of five hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. Happy to, again, to answer any questions. Most of the activities, especially those that fall under the public service activity line, should be pretty familiar, their organizations that have previously received funding through this program under CDVG. should be pretty familiar, their organizations that have previously received funding through this program under CDVG. And again, we're limited to fifteen percent. That tends to be fifteen percent of the grant can go to those types of activities. So that tends to be where we have the most competition, if you will. But we were able to fund all the organizations that did apply under that category, maybe not to the extent they would have liked. But we did provide funding more or less on, in, on par with what they have currently received from, from this office through that program.
Thank you, Mark. Actually, before I opened it up to the board, I forgot to ask for a motion in the beginning. Can I get a motion to approve?
Sorry.
So moved. Nancy?
Yep, sorry, having trouble with my unmute.
That's okay. Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the board for any questions?
Yeah, I don't have anything.
Okay.
I'm quite familiar with this program from the past, so no issues.
Sure.
Thank you. All right, well, if there's no questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and Mark, thanks for everything you do.
Thank you.
Mark does a lot. Mark does a lot. He wears a lot of hats, that's for sure. Okay, our next item is number thirteen. This is to hear and consider and endorse the Affordable Housing Committee's Affordable Housing Plan. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have the Affordable Housing Chair, Stephen Graff on the line as well. Hi, Stephen, nice to see you.
Hi, thank you.
And I know that you guys have been working on this and you've had quite a few meetings and a lot of participation. So I know this has been vetted fairly, fairly stringently. So I'm gonna open it up to the board for any questions. Or do you want to just briefly, Mark, about this, about where you guys are?
If I may.
Sure, thank you.
I'll just, I'll just note that, you know, as you, as you mentioned, this is more than a year's worth of effort on behalf of the Affordable Housing Committee, which engaged the services of Planted Metrics to assist them. It culminated in a public hearing that was held on the eleventh of May over at the Board of Ed. We had it also virtual. And then following that, a public hearing, the Board of, I mean, the Affordable Housing Committee met, considered the comments received and unanimously approved the plan that is before you. As mentioned, we've had a couple of joint workshops with the Planning and Zoning Commissions, some outreach, targeted outreach to various stakeholder groups. We had a community-wide survey that garnered about twelve hundred responses. Good engagement overall. The plan is required pursuant to Connecticut general statutes, which now requires communities to either update or create an affordable housing plan once every five years, beginning June first. So we're trying to line this up so that we can submit the plan in accordance with that timeframe. And of course, this is not our first, first go-round with this. The town has a history of creating affordable housing plans, starting back in nineteen eighty-eight, the most recent in twenty-fourteen. And this is an update to that twenty-fourteen plan. So I do know Steve Graff, the chairman, is here to respond to any questions. Steve, I don't know if you have any overarching comments before we entertain questions from the board. But again, I want to congratulate the Affordable Housing Committee on its efforts to put this plan together.
Thanks, Mark. I do have a couple of things I want to add, be brief on this. First, I want to thank the Affordable Housing Committee members. And for Nancy's benefit, five of the seven members are women, so urban ire are, I've gone there. As Mark said, this is our third plan. Fairfield, it should be noted, has been a leader in the state when it comes to activities like this. And so with this new regulation that all communities now have to get up to Fairfield standards, that's a good thing. The last plan that we did in twenty-fourteen had eleven goals and we were able to accomplish a number of them. It should be noted that the Affordable Housing Committee, we don't have a budget and we cannot enact any legislation, so we're advisory. We bring good ideas, we bring input from the community, and we make recommendations. This year's plan has two overarching goals. Number one is to obtain a moratorium from eight thirty G. And our second plan was entitled diversifying Fairfield's housing portfolio dash taking control of our future. And this is a continuation of that effort of taking control of our future. So get the moratorium and broaden the range of housing options and potential locations within the context of what's best for Fairfield. And I do want to also mention that Fairfield is really, really lucky to have Mark Barnhart. As Brenda said, he does a lot and he does an awful lot very well. And also Jim Went. We have this year, we have seven strategies and four of them require working hand-in-hand with TPZ to get them to modify some legislation. So with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, Steve. I know you guys worked really long and hard on this and our, you know, our departments work together quite well on this. Mark spends a lot of time meeting with zoning, not on just on these items, but also on our economic development front. I'm gonna open it up to the board.
So, go ahead. No, please, Nancy, go right ahead.
Thank you so much for, one, highlighting the work of the strong women on this committee, but also for the hard work that has gone into the, to the overall committee and to you, Mark, again. And Stephen, for leading, for leading this group. Obviously, great importance, this work. Can you just get into a little more of the specifics of some of the high-level recommendations that are different this year? Or you think will really move the needle, just so the public can hear some of those things at a high level?
Mark, you want, should I jump in?
Yeah, I'll take the, we divided the strategies into several tiers. The ones that we identified as having the highest impact were to look at our affordability set-aside requirements. Currently, we require ten percent of units to be set aside as affordable and developments of ten or more units. We'd like to see that increase to fifteen to twenty percent, especially in the T O D overlay zones where we allow for higher levels of density. Obviously, that has to be market sensitive so that the projects do pencil out and are able to support that. But we think that could increase the number of affordable units here in town. Because also, as Steve mentioned, we'd like to work with the Planning and Zoning Commission to take another look at our design residence district overlay regulations that previously worked quite well and created a number of condominium and rental developments that fit very contextually into neighborhoods. Some of the projects that are of longer vintage, you might be familiar with. We'd like to revisit that and return to that legacy, but that requires tweaking our regulations to some extent. And we're also working more closely with the Housing Authority. Now, the Housing Authority, unlike private developers, dedicates most of their units as affordable. So instead of setting aside the bare minimum of ten or thirty percent under eight thirty G, the Housing Authority typically sets aside anywhere from seventy to ninety to a hundred percent of those units as affordable. So another way for us to get to the, to the magic number for a moratorium more quickly and also to better meet the needs of our lower-income residents. So those are some of the key considerations. I think the one other thing that gets lost too is the importance, the nexus between design and affordable housing development. Just because they're affordable doesn't mean they have to be poorly designed or poorly built units. And we'd like to see a greater emphasis on providing criteria that would improve design considerations as part of that process. And again, that would require some support from the Planning and Zoning Commission, which we think we have based on the workshops we did. Steve, did you miss anything?
No, you did not. Nope.
Okay.
And let me just mention one other thing. So the Housing, the Affordable Housing Committee did work very hard in this. One of our members, who was an integral part and worked very hard and used to work with the Fairfield Senior Advocates, Carrie McOver, was part of the committee until very recently when she became ill. And it should be noted, she passed away last week. We're very sorry about that, and she'll be missed.
So sorry to hear that.
Oh, I am too.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you for sharing that.
Sorry to hear that.
Thank you.
She was very committed to this work, for sure.
That's a heartbreak. Thank you.
Our condolences to her family. Thank you for letting us know. Um, if I might, Nancy, do you have any other questions?
No, that was it. Thank you both.
Yeah, first of all, gentlemen, thanks to you and the committee for your hard work on this. Most appreciated. I know housing and zoning is, is obviously a hot topic, and not just in Fairfield, but across the state, as is the state regulation. So I appreciate you taking on the hard work. Quick question. I know the TP and Z has been working on what I refer to as the master plan. It's referred to under some other names. Is there anything that's in this affordable housing plan that's not consistent or raises concerns as relates to the master plan for the town?
Not to our knowledge. In fact, our expectation is that this will be incorporated into the P O C D update. And that was certainly the reason why we work so closely with not only planning and zoning staff, but the commission as well in drafting the plan that's before you. We wanted to make sure that we had their full input and support in going forward. So there wasn't anything in this plan that the Planning and Zoning Commission didn't otherwise indicate was a priority for them as well.
Okay, that's, that's good to know because that master plan is very important as it says.
Absolutely.
For the town going forward. With that in mind as well, Mark, one of the frustrations I think that many of us have had through the years, and correct me if I state this incorrectly, I'm not an expert, okay, obviously. My understanding is there's been enough affordable housing approved already in the town of Fairfield that if it had been acted upon, we would already have reached that moratorium. Is that fair to say?
That is fair to say. We can only apply once the units have been built and a certificate of occupancy issued after your construction.
So where are we in gaining ground on that? Just because eighty-three G has been such a, eight thirty, whatever it's called. It's been such a pain and bane of people's existence here in town. Where do we stand as relates hitting that moratorium by the numbers right now?
Roughly fifty points short. We have two projects currently under construction. Both are relatively small. The next project up after that will likely put us over the threshold. But you know, what I like to look at is when projects actually apply for a building permit and start construction. Then it's typically eighteen months, a year to eighteen months in construction before they're ready for a C E O. So that's, that's our challenge is, you know, we have a project that's about to break ground, which will definitely put us over the hump, but we'd like to move it a lot faster if we can.
So we're at about the eighteen to twenty-four month mark in terms of?
I would, I would guess that at the moment, yes.
And then what changes once we hit that moratorium level a bit?
Basically have a four-year breather where we can get, with, with a few exceptions, new applications submitted to us or to the Planning and Zoning Commission under eight thirty G. During that time, other projects that have already been approved or considered could move forward and be constructed. And that would allow us to then perhaps meet the criteria for a subsequent moratorium, which is a lower point threshold than the first.
So this plan is very important because this will live on for a number of years and should be our guiding principle after the moratorium is hit. Fair to say?
It'll live on for five years at least when we have to update the plan again under the state statutes.
Okay, so roughly three years that we'll be able to manage under this plan without anybody saying we're gonna hit you with an eighty, you know, eight thirty G and we don't care what your plan is, right?
I think that would be accurate, yes.
Okay. Okay, what's the most controversial part of your plan here? Is, is there one that generated the most heat, just so that we're all on the same page?
I don't, we did not get a lot of feedback, a lot of pushback, I should say, in terms of specific strategies. What we heard from the public loud and clear is they're not very happy about eight thirty G applications where they have very little control or say-so as to the location, the design, and the size and scale of that in contextual and in relationships to the neighborhood in which it's situated. So that is, we heard that very loud and clear that people are upset with those. They're concerned about the impact to the town as a whole, specifically with respect to traffic congestion, parking and the like. You know, infrastructure supports. So again, as Steve noted, really the town, what we'd like to do is achieve that moratorium so that we can reassert the local control and have more say in terms of how and where and, and to what extent affordable housing gets built so that we have, you know, again, more control over that.
More local control. I couldn't agree more. Couldn't agree more with those sentiments. All right, I thank you very much. And again, thank you to yourselves and all the commissioners who work so hard on the plan.
Thank you.
Thank you both. You know, obviously, this has been a lot of hard work and it is, it is mandated by the state. But obviously, it's in our best interest to do it. And I know that Steve, your committee, put a lot of effort into this and I do truly appreciate it. I know it's frustrating because we're trying to do the right thing on the town side. We're trying to build our own affordable housing and we are working to do that and coming up with solutions for that. But as Mark said, you know, you know, we can't, I mean, listen, I've not, I haven't been shy about how I feel about this, how I feel about the eight dash thirty G statute, fought for it, served on the Housing Committee for nine years in legislature. It is a very frustrating document. It does not add any appreciable amount of affordable housing. It allows developers a free pass to build tons of market units and very little affordable units. And frankly, the media area income for our area is really not that affordable. So the whole thing is just a disaster. So hopefully, we can just keep slogging along and start doing our own thing, which we are trying to do on Greenfield Street and in other areas on Quincy. And, and we can keep working to achieve some of that stuff where we have control over our own destiny, so to speak. Have something, Nancy, you'd like to say?
Yeah, just real quick. I mean, for me personally, one thing I know that trips people up is this whole notion of affordable and what's affordable and how we reframe some of that is just for me, an area of interest. And, and it has been controversial, but that's why I do really appreciate all that you're doing, Stephen and Mark. If, I know you're submitting by June first, if something comes up and you're, are you constantly looking, reevaluating and looking? And are you able to kind of submit? If someone sees something and something all of a sudden feels egregious or you hadn't thought about something, is there an opportunity to revisit what you've submitted?
This, this is a plan and plans should be living and breathing documents. Should be flexible to consider new information as it, as it comes forward. So I do think that that is the committee's outlook on this, Steve.
Right.
If I'm wrong, so.
No, yeah, I agree. It's a living document, but we don't have to resubmit. You know, my understanding is we submit June first and then the town continues to work on its own and doesn't have to resubmit for another five years.
True.
So I guess for me, then, my comment would be that you have my support and certainly hope that in the spirit of that, you know, we are constantly looking and flexing and, and stretching and testing and all of the things. So, but it does have my support today.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. Very good. Thank you, everyone. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Gentlemen, I think you're, Mark.
I think I'm a little done. Thank you.
Free to go. You make dinner.
Thank you.
All right, thank, thank you both, really. Genuinely, thank you for your hard work. You put a lot of effort and time into it and.
Thank you.
It's appreciated. Our next item is item fourteen. Can I get a motion to approve? The Chief Financial Officer wants to rescind the following previously adopted motion at the May second, twenty-twenty-two Board of Selectmen meeting to hear and consider adopt a resolution appropriating two point four million for the costs for the East Trunk Wetlands Cross, Crossing Project. First of all, do I have a motion to approve this? first of all, do I have a motion to approve this?
Some of.
I second it.
Okay, Jared, do you want to explain this to the board?
Sure. As the, as the title says, um, these next two are actually related. Uh, the first one is to rescind the May second vote that you guys took, which was a pre, a premature vote. Um, as we come to find out that the W P C A Commission had not yet voted on this item. Um, and so, um, and we believe that there's more work to be done to nail down that number, um, that the number will likely change in the future. So that's why this is being rescinded and then the second item. Um, and I'll get to that, but it has to do with the way the, the uh, the costs, the debt service costs are paid for. Um, so we're asking that you rescind this item.
Well, wait a minute. Can I ask a question? This was the, I asked at that meeting if the W P C A had voted on this, had or not?
Can, can I? Well, they were voting. They were gonna be voting on it. Um, they were supposed to vote on it, I guess, the prior, the week after. Go ahead, Nancy.
I was just going to explain. I think what had happened was there was a misunderstanding. The assumption, I think it was a human error. I think the people on the call who were answering made the erroneous claim that we had voted on it, but not with bad intent. I think it was just a misunderstanding. And so you had asked the question. I think it was answered in earnest, but it just didn't match up with where the W P C A was at. I, I could be wrong there, but I think that's what happened.
That's my understanding as well.
Yep.
It was a memory recollection issue. And then the W P C A had said that there was still work to be done, as Jared, you just alluded to on that number. So we voted on it as a board here thinking, based on the information available, but it was just human error.
So why are we voting to rescind? It looks like we're voting to rescind this twice?
So the uh, if you're referring to the two items, the first item has to do with the uh, the resolution appropriating the money. The second one has to do with the, is the resolution that um, that the W is, resolution about the M O U between the town and the W P C A saying that the town, that the W P C A would pick up the debt service related to this, even though the town would be issuing the bonds. So when you vote, when you voted on this, you also voted on these two items separately.
So we voted on, so we voted on the item, then we voted on the funding mechanism for the item? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay, when is this coming back before us and how materially different is it going to be? Do we know?
I don't know the answer to that. That's uh, that's what they're going to be working on.
They said that there was a lot of their, they have a lot of items and they want to look at everything holistically before they come back with this one. So I asked that same question. So they don't have, they don't have an answer yet.
Okay.
All right. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and to be clear, we're to take back the motion.
Yes, to rescind the motion. And then the second one, I'm going to ask for a motion to, to the same thing. Um, the bond uh, supplemental resolution. Uh, can I get a motion to approve that rescinding? Item number fifteen.
So moved.
Nancy?
Seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you so much. Um, item number sixteen. Um, uh, Selectman Flynn had asked for an update on the Board of Ed, from the Board of Ed, on the enrollment projections and financial projections for the current fiscal year. Um, and so I believe we have um, Courtney Laborious on um, the Finance Director for the school system. Um, we have Dr. Um, Parrish, the Executive Director of Operations, and that um, I believe Christine Vitale, there she are. Hi, Christine, um, is on as well. And so I'm going to open it, open it up um, for uh, Selectman Flynn, if you would like to ask some of your questions.
Thank you. Hey, ladies, first of all, thank you for being here today. Greatly appreciate that. I know you guys have a lot of meetings you go to. So thanks for taking the time. And this was a long agenda for, so thanks for being patient as well. Um, that being said, I think there were press reports over the last several weeks over a change in enrollment projections uh, for the next fiscal year, the next calendar year for the school district that were substantial from what had been being talked about. I think the number two twenty comes to mind. Do you guys want to speak to that a little bit and tell me what's going on in that area?
I'm gonna, um, Dr. Parrish, can you take that question, being that you presented the enrollment projections to the board?
Absolutely. It's the Kia Parish Executive Director of Operations and Processes for Fairfield Public Schools. So the um, the projections that were provided as a part of the budget process were the projections as of the start of the school year, as opposed to where we are now in May. So the numbers that were presented at the May tenth Board of Ed meeting uh, basically showed that as of May second, we had two hundred and twenty-one less students, um, fewer students enrolled in our elementary schools that in comparison to the projection. What was shared at that board meeting was as of a week after that date. So as of May ninth, um, that number had dropped from two twenty-one to uh, one hundred and, is get the correct number? That that number had dropped to one hundred and ninety-one. Uh, what happens is each week we uh, provide our schools with an update on where we are registration-wise. We expect over the course of the summer to those, for those numbers to increase, and they have increased over the course of the, the past few weeks. And it's something that we do continue to monitor throughout the uh, the course of the summer. But the original projection was based on where we were projected to be as of the start of the school year, um, when we open in August.
So you monitor this every week?
Correct.
And where, where are we at today? Last, last one was May tenth. We're now at May, what, twenty-third? Where are we?
With permission from the Chair, this hasn't yet to be shared with the Board of Education. Permission from the, the Chairperson Vitale?
Um, Dr. Parrish, being that we were here and we've waited, you can share it. And uh, it is a somewhat of a fluid number. Students some students leave. So you're hot off the presses from Dr. Parrish. Go right ahead.
Thank you. So as of May twenty-third, we are one hundred and forty-eight students less than the projection. So again, those numbers between May second and today, we've dropped from two twenty-one to one forty-eight. So that will continue to happen as families continue to um, come in for their registration appointment, appointments, our Registration Office books appointments throughout the summer. Uh, we tend to get a surge in July and August as families, you know, move into town or um, families that may be incoming kindergartners come in and register their students. So those are things that we do continue to monitor throughout the course of the summer as we um, make our way towards the beginning of the school year. And then even beyond that, um, as a part of our October first reporting to the state.
Are we usually off by this amount? At the, this two twenty, starting at two twenty, sounds like a large number to be off at the start, but I don't, I don't have a context for that, other than the overall enrollment numbers.
Yes. So uh, May first of last year, we had four hundred and eighty-seven kindergarten, kindergarten students who were enrolled um, in the district at this, you know, at that May first deadline, at that May first point. Um, this year, as of May second, we were four sixty-six. So it fluctuates from one year to the next. Um, we typically, like I said, it, we're light on registrations in May um, and early June, but that definitely continues to pick up as we progress through the course of the summer.
Yeah, I guess that wasn't, thank you for the answer. I, I might not have phrased the question appropriately. Last year at this time, last year on May first or so, as compared to your budgeted enrollment, what was your differential? This year you said it was two twenty. What was it last year at time? I'm trying to gauge uh, how far off we are and how much this fluctuates annually.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, correct. I do not have the projection from last year in front of me. That's something that I would have to pull up. Um, you only have the actual, the actual. That's something that I can look up relatively quickly.
Dr. Parrish, excuse me for interrupting. Christine Vitale, Chair of the Board of Education. I thought that you reported that we were about two hundred between May uh, two thousand twenty-one and September of two thousand twenty-one?
We, that's, that's how much we, um, that's how many enrolled between May and, and, and August and September. I'm sorry, May and September of twenty twenty-one. But in terms of the actual projection, I don't have the projection amount, the projected amount. I know that we did.
We did add the two thirty-seven.
Yeah, was it, was that?
Two hundred and thirty-seven were added between May from your numbers before, um, Ms. Parrish, Dr. Parrish, two hundred and thirty-seven students. And so right now, we're approximately a hundred and ninety-one short. So we would expect that that trend would continue and will continue to report that out. So.
Let me, let me be clear, my question, just so that we're talking the same thing. You have kids that enroll and then you have, I would assume, people that leave the district as well. So when we're talking the number of, you know, when you, the number you just quoted, is that the net number that happened last year or is that just the enrolled number that happened last year?
So the actual number last year, not the net, was the four eighty-seven. What you're asking is, is the net between what the projection was versus where we were as of May first. And that is what I'm looking for currently.
Yeah, but I, and you're right. Thank you. Let me rephrase. Okay, last year, you made a comment um, that we added two hundred students. We, two hundred students enrolled between May and September of last year. Okay?
Correct.
What I want to know is, was that truly who enrolled or was that the net differential in total kids in the school district from May first till September first? Or was that just what enrolled? And then you had some, some kids that unroll, I don't know what that word is, uh, left the district. Um, so therefore the net differential was X. That's what I'm trying to get to.
So that was the net. That was inclusive of those that withdrew and those who were newly enrolled. Um, your previous question that asked about what number of students in kindergarten was for, for the, for the start of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. It was four eighty-nine. So as of May first, we were right, right, we were right there. Um, but we did that preview, that year have a lot of families who held their students back. Um, and didn't enroll until the, the subsequent year. So that's why we did see a huge jump in our kindergarten numbers last year.
But you keep going to kindergarten and what I thought was the two twenty was basically what I would refer to. And forgive me if it's a wrong nomenclature, the primary grades, not just kindergarten, right?
Yes. So it, it was a, it was the entire um, primary grade. Uh, as of last year, around, around that time in May, uh, we were actually up two hundred and forty-nine students total, eight through five.
Between May and September?
As, no, as of May first of last year, we were up, in comparison to the projection for the year.
So last year you were up to eighty-nine and this year you're down to twenty.
We were down to twenty. We are no longer down to twenty. But yes, we were up to eighty-nine. And again, that is because we did see a surge in our kindergarten enrollments, our kindergarten registrations last summer because the previous year, families held their students out for the year. So we saw a larger number of kindergarten and, and that's what, that's why I'm referring to kindergarten because a large portion of that increase was due to kindergarten numbers.
Right. I'd, I'd love to know when we get to September where this all stands. I just want to better understand this as we go into the next budget cycle. Um, because that two twenty hit like a thunderbolt, uh, to me. Um, the number after, after the budget cycle to see that we were down that much in enrollment. So I appreciate the context you provided and I look forward to hearing more about it in the future. So I thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Jump on what you just said, actually, because I'm curious. Um, is that okay?
Yes, go right ahead, Nancy.
Um, and Christine, maybe this is a, Ms. Vitale, maybe this is a question for you. Um, because you, Tom, just asked for that in the context of the budget cycle. And I wanted to um, understand from Christine, if she could sort of address that a little bit. The enrollment numbers, why it's such, it's with a fluctuating number, why that's not always such a good apples-to-apples metric? And if it's not the appropriate time for it now, I just thought, since Tom, you brought that up as a question in context of, of the budget cycle.
Well, we're going to use our October first numbers. I mean, those are our official enrollment numbers. So right now, as Dr. Parrish just explained, there is fluctuation. We have new families moving in. People withdrawing from the district because they decided to um, you know, go to private school or move out of, out of town. So it is fluctuating. So we really use that October first number. When budgeting, we also have just this past few months retained the formerly known Malone McGroom. Now Malone is slammed to update our tenure projections. We are still reviewing that data. That information will also be shared with the Board of Education, the community, and then in the upcoming month or so. And that'll factor into next year's budget as well.
See, I think um, these numbers move around so much. I'd like to see what the trends are over the period of time between the budget cycle and the start of school and see what that trend is and if there is a trend. Um, because we hear so much during the budget process about cost per pupil, right? And then right after the budget is voted on comes the article that we're down by two hundred and twenty. Now, that's out of context perhaps, so that's fair. But we can't base something and, and argue the entire budget on cost per pupil and then be off so much on how many pupils there are, if in fact we're off. So that's what concerns me, particularly when we have the super saying, you know, we're going to cut heads, we're going to cut back on Parrish and do the general thing that happened between the budget process when the enrollment numbers were all over the place doing that same process.
Um, may I ask, uh, may I answer Ms. Vitale that the per pupil number, just for do you mind if I just give?
Go ahead, Ms. Laborious.
Okay, it's an audited and verified number that's released just for your um, identification and so you feel comfortable. The number that is the per pupil that the state uses is actual expenditures and actual October one enrollment. So when you look at that historical trend of the spend per pupil, it is um, not a projected number. That number is a, an actual number.
I understand that, but by definition, your projection is a projected and that's not audited. That's your projection. And when you come out with a projection at a table during an audit process, during a budget process, and then a month and a half after the vote, it comes out that we're two twenty down at the same period of time, that's not an audited number. So I agree with you about the past numbers. I don't agree with you about the budgeted number. And I'd just like to know where, where that comes from. And you provided nice context today, so I just want to see where, what that trend line shows over time. That's all. So I appreciate it. Thank you for that. The, the next question I had is in the same topic. There was something about a five hundred thousand, um, five hundred thousand surplus this year. Um, where's that standing? What's going on with that? And how did that develop, if we don't mind? And you can be brief. I don't, I, you report to the Board of Education. So I just, I was curious because I read about it, if you don't mind.
Sure. Um, I'm going to hand that over to Ms. Laborious. She has shared that information. The number is down slightly from what might have been reported in the press earlier in the budget cycle. Um, but this information was shared with the Board of Education and then the Board of Finance is part of our quarterly report. But I will let Ms. Laborious give you a, a quick overview right now. Ms. Laborious?
Thank you, Ms. Vitale. Um, thank you, Mr. Flynn. Uh, overall, we're projecting a minor surplus of four hundred and thirty-two thousand as of Q three. It's about point two-three percent of the overall education budget. Um, and this is with the assumption that schools spend down their full balance of the school accounts. All full-time staff remain employed until year end, and the insurance trend is as it is with no major life change events. Um, that the remaining special education contracts remain billed and we have a small balance in support expenses. The main driver for the balance is um, higher than anticipated attrition and retire, and retirements as part of that attrition um, as well as vacant positions in the parent educator title. So it resulted in a balance also in the insurance accounts. Uh, the surplus um, in personnel and benefits is is a result of time to hire and um, almost double the number of retirees than we anticipated in the budget. Um, then um, we have a high need in special education as we have been reporting. Um, and that remained um, true. And that was about three million dollars. Um, we also had a minor balance in the transportation fund as well as um, looking at potential balance in um, our electricity.
Thank you for that. So the net, net is uh, basically a surplus at the end of the year, all other things being equal, which is what you just said, of about four hundred thousand dollars, right?
Yep, that's correct.
Yeah, the one thing I'll, I'll comment on is it's funny. Yeah, the one thing I'll, I'll comment on is it's funny because you use the word minor. It's a minor surplus of 400,000. I agree with that. But it would also be a minor cut of $400,000 too. We can't say that it's something's major and something's minor in the same way. So it, so we're going to get it, the town's going to get a check back, I guess, from the Board of Ed for the 400, or what's going to happen with that 400?
So we're still in the process of finalizing. This is a Q3 number. So as you know, bills are still coming in. It, it was our best estimate, and we did want to be realistic and be, and share that with the board and with the town. The board hasn't met yet about what we would do because of the fact that the results are preliminary, and that's not our final quarter, um, analysis.
No, that's fair. That's fair. I understand that. Um, well, good. I, I look forward to hearing more about that. But thank you so much. And I, and again, I appreciate you ladies being, being, um, willing to come to the board meeting today, and thanks, thanks for sticking around through the agenda. I appreciate it. And Christine, I think you had something else going on, so I appreciate you jumping on. So thank you.
Got home in time. The, the change to the four o'clock start made me, uh, able to get home from work. So thank you.
Have a good one.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. Okay. Um, thank you, ladies, for taking the time.
Thank you.
Item, uh, number 17 is, um, can I get a motion to consider an act upon tax refunds as recommended by a tax collector in the amount of $70,680.54?
So moved.
Second?
Seconded.
Any discussion on that?
I have to be honest with all of these. I don't sit and do the math. Does someone, there's like a check and a recheck. I, I, because I've been voting for these. I just want to make sure somebody.
I'm sorry, Nancy, your.
I was saying, I, I just said, I say yes, assuming the math is always right. I just want to make that clarification that I, I didn't actually add up the math, but, and I haven't. So.
How much we have refunded over the past year?
No, no, no. Each, each item. I mean, it's a silly thing, but I'm not, is there somebody that does the double checking, just in case the math, I don't know.
The tax collector sends this to us.
Okay.
For the agenda. And Jared works with him on it.
Okay. That's all. I just, I say yes, but I don't do the math. So I'm just, I don't have any other questions.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Um, I just want to, um, a couple of items quickly. We, obviously Memorial Day weekend is coming up, and, um, it's our second now year that we're able to, uh, celebrate our activities that we have in town. So I just want to recommend, uh, remind everyone that, um, this Saturday, the Sea Memorial, um, service, which is very lovely at the Marina, is at 10:00 AM. Last year it was not lovely. It was pouring, sheeting, side rain, freezing, and it was not lovely. Uh, I was sopping wet.
I had a blast. Come on.
All the veterans and everyone, and it was, wasn't good, but.
The funny part was when the speaker's notes ran and he.
Anyway, um, hopefully it's going to be much more pleasant this Saturday.
Be nice weather. Yes.
Fingers crossed, because it's very lovely. And then on Monday is, um, well, actually on Sunday is, uh, the Veterans Mass at Assumption, uh, that happens every year. And on Monday, we have St. Paul's Pancake Breakfast, uh, which is fun for a lot of the families. And then, um, our annual parade, obviously, which kicks off at 10:00, and hope to see both of you there at 9:30 for the lineup. It is a lot of fun to be with our community and, um, to march in, in, in honor of our veterans. And, and there's also a annual, St. Paul's Annual Memorial Day, uh, I'm sorry, um, the Eunice Burr Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution are having a tag sale on Monday, the 30th, um, from 9:00 to 2:00 PM near Old Academy, at Old Academy Hall. And, and then Memorial Day after the parade is the picnic and concert from 12:00 to 3:00 at the Fairfield Museum. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, um, those items for not just the board, but also the public listens to. I did put it in the newsletter, and I will put it in again Friday, because we have a newsletter this week.
At our next meeting in early June, would it be possible if, if either Sands could come and give an update, or if you could give us an update, just where we are with COVID and the numbers? And I know there's been a roller coaster, and I think people are just wondering where things are at, and it would be great to get an update. And obviously want to wish everyone a healthy and safe Memorial Day as well. Thank you for the update on all those events.
Sure. And I will ask Sands, um, to put something together. I just also want to remind both of you, I know I've sent you some emails, um, asking if you could, uh, catch up on the CRC meetings. They've been meeting quite a bit. They've had a lot of special meetings as well. I, you know, I've only been able to attend a couple, but I have taken the time, um, to watch their meetings when they're put up on the, uh, Fair TV. Um, so I'm following along. Um, they have had a lot of different people in over the past, God, it's been a while now they've been meeting. They've had experts from public policy and governance, from Sacred Heart, from Fairfield U. They've had presentations from the Council of Small Towns. They've had lots of different people come in and speak to them, um, about different, uh, towns and, and things that they do. Attorney Mednick has made himself very available, uh, to anyone who wants to, and I know people have taken him up on it. And he's been very helpful, I think, to the commission because of his experience in doing this throughout the state. And they, they have looked at a lot of things. So I would, you know, really encourage, um, both of you to, to check, catch up. I know it's not fun. I don't have, enjoy using my free time watching them either. But, um, I have, because I want to be fully informed about what they're discussing, and they have put a lot of effort, those members into asking a lot of questions. They've had a lot of presentations, and they've learned a lot. And by watching them, you know, you can also follow along on how they've, um, dug deep on a lot of items and learned things. So I would really encourage you, uh, because I know that they're going to be coming to us. I don't know when exactly, but I think it is soon, because there's like a timeline that has to be on, um. There has to be a big public meeting they have to have, and then they have to come to us, and then it has to be written and put on the ballot. So there's a whole bunch of, um, like, different checkmarks. So I, I would please encourage you both, because this is important. Listen, I know we, I, I had wanted some big changes. I had recommended some big things to be changed. I thought we, you know, we're such a big town, uh, the 11th largest in the state. And I wanted some, um, some, you know, more dramatic changes. There isn't anything really dramatic changing in the charter, but there are some small things. I know they're cleaning it up. It was kind of disorganized and not that, um, organized according to Mednick, but, um, but I think it's important, um, for both of you, because obviously we're going to be voting on it. So I would, I would really encourage you to watch all of those meetings, so you have a real understanding about their discussions. Sure, Nancy, would you like to ask something?
Yeah, I mean, I would just add respectfully, I mean, as part-time Board of Selectmen members, I understand how much hard work and detail has gone into this. And I was speaking with Attorney Mednick and taking advantage of his availability and willingness to speak to us. You know, I want to make sure that we are given enough time as a board so that we can publicly discuss the changes and have that time. So we're not pressured or forced to have to make any, you know, very quick decisions with quick turnaround and, and make sure that we do get ample time to publicly discuss what is being recommended. And while I appreciate that you have been putting in that time and effort to watch, it's not possible to go back and, and watch, especially the part-time nature of the work that we do. So I just want to make sure that the public portion of what we're discussing, when it comes before the body, that, that they have enough time to present to us so that we can amply, you know.
No, no, they will. And do. No, I, I, they will. And I, you know, listen, I, 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 I respect what you're saying, but I also, you know, and, and, and they're also volunteers as well. And, you know, I listen, I served on the Board of Education for six years as a volunteer. I spent literally thousands of hours listening and, and reading and, and, and paying attention to things, um, as a volunteer, uh, because I ran for office and my expect, there was an expectation that I'd be informed and understand what I'd be, will be voting on. So I, I do have some expectation of that, and I know it's volunteer, but still, there, again, this is an important document. We all, we all ran for office, um, for these responsibilities, and this is the charter of our town. So um, I would encourage, uh, you to, to watch it, uh, to the best that you can. And of course, uh, Mr. Mednick has been, made himself available to answer any questions. I see Attorney Baldwin putting his hand up. Is there something, Jim?
Yeah, I, I, as somebody who is very familiar with the current charter, and, and Attorney Mednick has many balls up in the air. He's working on, uh, three other charter, charters as we speak. It, I would offer, uh, to have a one-on-one, uh, walkthrough and highlight the significant changes and stylistic changes with the other, um, select persons here, Nancy and, and Tom. That might be the best way to go about it. So I, I'd be happy to schedule something for that purpose. And I think the time is, is now here for us to, uh, to go through that, especially after Wednesday's, uh, meeting, which is going to be a significant one, and maybe the last one before it goes to you.
I'd like, thank you for that.
Well, a couple of things here. I think that, um, I think what everybody said is right. Okay. So I think that number one, Brenda encouraging us to watch the discussion that's gone on at the Charter Revision Commission. I've have watched a, a bunch of it. I've, um, spoken to members of the Charter Commission when they've written out, when they've reached out to me. Now, I haven't reached out to them at all, um, on purpose, because this was to be their thing. And I wanted to remain, um, independent until such time as, you know, the cupcake was baked and presented to us for voting. So I, I waited, and when they reached out to me, I interacted with them. And then have not, when I have not been reached out to. That said, I think, um, after the vote on Wednesday, getting some private time with Mr. Mednick to go through, uh, the more salient, um, changes in the charter. I think, Jim, I think that's an excellent idea and would make myself available for that. And I do also think that making sure that there's enough time for our, our public debate is also going to be important to the credibility of, of the process and for, uh, the townspeople to know that not only did the Charter Revision Commission take it seriously, but they, we did as well. So whatever that means, whether it's nothing else on the agenda for that meeting, whether it's a special meeting, well, I, you know, I'll make myself available for that to make sure that we have enough time to go through it publicly, as well as with Mr. Mednick in private. So I think you're, I think everybody's right.
Appreciate that, Tom. Thanks.
Yeah.
Very good. So, uh, Jim, just to be clear, I, I was not following along. Is, is Wednesday their last meeting, or what, what is?
They, they don't know yet. They'll, they'll figure out whether they're at, at the point where they're ready to present something to the Board of Select Persons or not. And, and I just want to remind the board that this is meant to be a collaborative process. So, uh, Tom, I appreciate your, your kind of standing back a little bit. It is appropriate to, uh, to engage the commission and to, to, to collaborate, so to speak, because uh, it, it requires your input and ultimately your approval. And, uh, and that's, uh, that's as important, your role here.
Yeah, you just kind of let them do their work and come back to you with their thoughts and, you know, presentation, and that's what I look forward to.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Um, so if there's no other items, um, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Seconded.
Seconded.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Take care, everybody.
Everyone, have a good evening.
Bye.
Bye-bye.